Okay. Okay.
Hey, Tim.
Hey.
That green background makes you look fat.
So do the other ones.
Okay, folks, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Sue Culver is here in the room with me, and I'll be reading off her roles in our list of people tonight when we take votes and also call it a roll. So if you just save your present when your name is called. Charles Dacus.
Present.
Ben Farley.
Present.
Willa German.
Present.
Tim Goodrow.
Present.
Jimmy Jordan.
Present.
Terry Leggett.
Present.
David Lillard. Sylvester Logan.
Present.
Jim Norton.
Present.
Claude Oglesby. Tommy Perkins.
Present.
Kevin Powers.
Present.
Dale Reeves.
Present.
Steve Reeves.
Present.
Elizabeth Rice.
Present.
Ray Seals. Ray is in the audience. Robert Seals.
Present.
Bill Walker.
Present.
Larry Watkins.
Present.
Okay, Larry's in the audience also. Oh, we have eighteen present, one absent, the Clara Quorum. At this time is invocation by Mr. Chuck Dacus, Commissioner Dacus, and after that we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Dacus.
I'll give you a prayer if you would. Dear God, we come to you tonight to ask you to be at, be with all our citizens, and some of them are in line of wildfires and hurricanes and pandemic that seems to be uncontrollable. But, but we also come tonight just to ask your blessings for only our small little group as we try to decipher the issues that face our small part of the world. In Christ's name, amen.
Please, please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And for the trouble which stands one nation under God indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Since we have the podium set up, are there any comments or any non-agenda items from anybody in the courtroom? I'm not hearing any. At this time, approval of minutes, the minutes are in your packets. Is there any additions or corrections?
Mayor.
Commissioner Powers, second.
Commissioner Norton, did the Commissioner Norton make the motion?
I did not, but I will.
I did.
Who, who made the motion, please?
Parkins.
Parkins, Commissioner Parkins, all right, and second Commissioner Powers. The, all the votes tonight will all be roll call, so bear with me. To approve the minutes, vote yes when your name is called. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves, Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seal, Seals, Seals, excuse me? Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, eight in favor, none against. Folks, I'm gonna have to just take just a second, there is a, the governor is issuing an extension on the order to have electronic meetings. So I've got, there is a motion that we passed early on. Just a second. That I need for y'all to, somebody to make the motion so that we can make sure we keep everybody happy.
So.
Second, Farley.
Let me throw the motion up on the table for, I may hope on the screen so everybody can see it. Okay. Take just a second to read it and make sure that, understand, but this is simply says that we're gonna follow the rules of open meetings and follow the governor's orders. Okay, again, I'll start over. If somebody'd like to make this motion?
So.
Commissioner Logan, here a second.
Second, Farley.
Commissioner Farley. All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioners Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice? Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Motion, motion passes, eighteen in favor, none against. Let me get this off the screen. Okay. Next item on the agenda tonight is public hearings. The first one is a solar within one mile of 161 KV TBA right-of-way. Mr. Pittner cannot be here tonight, but Ms. Jackie Smalley, who is his assistant in the planning office, is online. And at this time, I'll, this will be a public hearing, let me let her go through and sort of review what this amendment is. Ms. Smalley? Oh, I said she's on here, there we go.
She's muted.
Yeah, give me one second, I'm trying to help her out.
There, sorry about that. Okay, what this is, is this is a resolution to confine solar power generation facilities generally to within one mile of a 161 KV Tennessee Valley Authority right-of-way. Basically, what Mr. Pittner did on this was he looked at the amount of lines that we had running through the county that were 161 KV and went through and determined that this would help to limit the number of applicants who were wanting to do this, as long as they were restricted within a radius of it. Because since people have learned about it, it has become a very popular topic of discussion in our office.
Okay, anything else to add to it?
As far as for the planning commission, let me see here, the planning commission did favor it. However, the development committee did not favor it.
Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, we'll go into a public hearing, let me stick my head out, make sure everybody is with the process on how to get.
You got it digitally, you can send it to me. Just, you can do, you can do whatever screen is what you take, so.
My name is Gary Bullwinkle at 578 Yum Yum Road. He's about to put up a map, carefully looked at the transmission lines running across Fayette County. I found like a hundred and twenty miles of these transmission lines, if you get a mile on each side, that's two hundred and twenty square miles, which is a very large number of square miles to be put into a rural residential area of medium light industrial solar arrays for electrical generation. To me, this proves the insufficiency of the special exception code to put solar farms under, because state law says that the growth plan prohibits high-density commercial industrial residential area. And then the exact zoning law says preserve and protect open space in agriculture. All these solar farms have many acres of agriculture being taken away, and they have lots of fencing, which prevents turkeys and deer and even people from having access to the open spaces of a rural area. In the special exception code, it says that that is to be used in such a manner that it is harmonious and in keeping with the underlying code of this. And it's not, so it's proof of that. Mr. Pittner had a, another subject that said, well, let's do it on the, where it has to have access off of the state highways and or a few other roads, even looking at the intersections of the state highways and these transmission lines and rural residential areas or growth areas within the cities. It's still fifty or sixty square miles of industrial zoning that's unprecedented to be done without the proper methodology and also something more than nothing. I mean, there are no written benefits, risks, loss studies or anything before the public that would tell us that this is a good move or a bad move. On the final thing, if you don't do it, then you still have all of rural residential as the, where you can put big solar farms with the same thing, so you have many hundreds of square miles of Fayette County that can be made a medium light industrial area. And so that's just beyond the pale of what a special exception could do. If you want to do this, this should be done under the growth plan law, which has its own problems because we have nine municipalities, but it's still, they, the municipalities didn't get the vote on this. The municipalities didn't get, see any special studies on this. The people in those municipalities didn't, the people in the county didn't, so why are we being? So this proves a fallacy in the special exception, whichever way you do it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else you'd like to speak to against this resolution? One second.
My name is Dr. William Hendry. I live at forty-six seventy-five Yum Yum Road. And frankly, I don't take pleasure in once again having to appear before this body. But since I've been asked to serve as a spokesman for my community, I am back. The reason I'm not happy about being here is because we have on several other occasions presented to the county commissioners, the board of zoning appeals, and the planning commission evidentiary documentation of the deleterious effects of two thousand square acre six-mile industrial-grade solar farm will have on the land and rural property referred to as the Yum Yum Project, which is just the beginning of what is now being proposed as an extension along all of the TBA lines. We have documented right here, big packet. The anticipated damage to our county roads and farming traffic by heavy equipment and trucks transporting a million-plus solar panels and other logistical equipment during construction. We provided evidence based on similar but smaller projects that have left other counties and municipalities putting major bills for road repairs and congestion problems. We provided documentation that property values of homeowners living near an industrial-grade solar farm can be expected to lose up to twenty percent of their value. We have documented the dangers such sites have on wildlife. Deer, wild turkey, bobcat, cougar, rabbits, raccoon, and a plethora of other wild animals and birds all make their habitat in the area currently designated to be fenced off by six square miles of cyclone fencing topped with barbed wire and two thousand acres covered in glass just in the Yum Yum Project alone. To date, we still have not seen an official environmental study that addresses the impact upon our local habitat or the effect it will have on our rural residences and community when animals are forced to migrate. We have documented the toxic chemicals contained in solar panels and voiced concern over the effect those chemicals will have on our community's water table, especially when it comes time for their removal and disposal. We have documented not only the loss of farming revenue for individuals and for our county, but the impact it would have on all the industries that support farming, the granaries, gyms, tractor supply and equipment, and sales, et cetera. We have voiced our concern that very clear state and county laws specifically prohibit the industrialization of land zoned agricultural and R1. And that they are being, those laws are being deliberately ignored. We also stated that using a special exception by the board of zoning appeals to rezone what is currently six square miles of agricultural R1 land was not only way beyond the scope and purview of the BZA resolving minor zoning issues, but it was a deliberate attempt to circumvent Tennessee eleven oh one growth plan. The county planner told the planning commission at the last meeting that the law had been meticulously followed, which is patently false. If the law had been meticulously followed, he and his office, the BZA, and this body of county commissioners would not be in the midst of a lawsuit right now. We also pointed out that this resolution placed the burden of inspection, administration, and general oversight of these solar farms and areas upon the BZA, which is way beyond their scope and ability to perform. I'm not happy about being here tonight because each of these issues and others I'm not going to repeat have been voiced by other citizens of our community and have fallen on deaf ears. Now, what we as citizens saw on the horizon and which is coming to fruition by these resolutions is the opening up of our county to not just the six miles of the Yum Yum Project, but to potentially dozens of solar farms stretching across two hundred twenty-plus miles on either side of the TB A power lines all throughout our county, which will affect other communities just like ours. Our little communities pushed back in the lawsuit, promised to be just the first of many more when communities like ours have other solar farm projects pushed down their throats. We believe that what is now happening was not fully understood when the planning commissioners slipped a resolution to allow solar arrays for use in agricultural R1 areas some time ago, and which was subsequently approved by this body. Who would fault the property owner for installing a few solar arrays on his land to provide energy to his home? But this has gone far beyond simple solar arrays and is endangering the future of our county, our agricultural base, and rural residents for only the benefit of a few special interests. What is truly bewildering is that none of these energy, none of the energy potentially produced by these solar farms will even serve our county. The only arguable potential benefit for our county will be from modest taxes, which if these companies were forced to build on land properly zoned industrial would be much greater. But then that is not in their interest. They want to scoop up cheap land, avoid taxes, and get it all done before government incentives play out within the next two years. Why the madcap rush to push all of this through? I hope the answer does not lie in what was recently published in the Fayette Falcon, where it illustrated property owned by several members of this body along TBA lines who might potentially profit from these resolutions being passed. That would be truly sad. In conclusion, by representing the citizens of our community, I'm asking that these resolutions be tabled for further study and that a moratorium be placed on all solar farm projects until such a study is completed and made available to the public. Further, I'm asking that if the vote proceeds to approve these resolutions, that any voting member who owns or who is related to another who owns property within one mile of the TBA power lines abstain from voting in a public roll call vote. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against this resolution? All right, we declare a public hearing closed. Commissioners, Ms. Smalley, commissioners, are any questions to Ms. Smalley?
Commissioner. I cede to Mr. Norton.
Mr. Chairman, first off, are we going to address all these individually, or are we trying to lump all these into one discussion?
Each individual resolution is listed on your agenda. The first three on the, on the public hearings all have to do with solar, each of them is a separate one from the planning commission. Planning commission adopted each of them separately and sent them forward. And the development committee reviewed each and every one of them, and they sent back negative recommendations on those three. So we will address each of those in turn.
Okay. What, what, what's up for discussion now?
The resol, the, the first one, the one that's solar within one mile of 161 KV TBA right-of-way. Basically, it would limit where you could place these solar arrays within one mile of that voltage of a line. I think the thinking was is to sort of somewhat restrict it. Development committee decided that it was probably now the best interest to limit it and to allow more folks least opportunity to partake or participate in a program.
Okay, and then how did our development committee, how, how did they rule on that?
They denied it. They said that they, they're recommending denial of that to the county commission.
Okay. And with that, I'm, I yield back, but I want to reserve some time to come back to the other articles that are being laid out.
Each and every one of them will have its own public hearing, so we've got a little while longer to go for.
Very good, I yield back.
Commissioner Powers here. Ms. Smalley, a point, a couple points of clarification, if you could help me out. The two hundred and twenty square miles that the, the good gentleman spoke about, that is the actual mileage within one mile of a TBA power line that we're talking about. But that would not be the amount that is eligible, because am I not correct in what was discussed previously that only forty percent of acreage is actually allowed to be used? Yes, sir. Okay, and then that, so that would be only eighty-eight mi, square miles, I mean, it's still a large amount, but it's definitely not the two hundred and twenty mu, it was square miles that was discussed. And the Yum Yum Project, it was mentioned, it's two thousand acres, is that the total acreage of the project or the acreage of what would be covered by actual panels? If I'm remembering correctly, the Yum Yum Project was a total of about forty-four hundred acres, however, only about a thousand or fifteen hundred, I believe, was going to be covered by panels. Okay. And. Okay. I was just going to add in for the committee too, and I know that there were a few concerns as far as the barbed wire on top of the fencing as they were speaking about, and that is something that we have taken out as a requirement. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
Mayor, may I say a word?
Yes, sir.
This has come about, first I'd like to thank and commend Mr. Pittner and Ms. Smalley in their office for all the hours and many, many hours and days they put in on this. This first came to the development committee a few months ago as one big huge resolution to try to regulate the solar panels in, in the county. The development committee was, committee was trying to set a balance that would be fair to the property owners in the agricultural zone lands where they can, it's their land, they own the land, they should be able to make the decision of whether they should be able to have solar farms or not, and yet protect the citizens of the county who have residences around those and on those roads that their investment, their houses would be protected from solar farms. That's why we talked about setbacks which will come up, that's why we talked about a mile from the main power line, we didn't want TBA using eminent domain to go crashing across the county to, to to tax their lines to a solar farm that was not near a power line. All these, and the financial ones which should come up here in a few minutes also, all these things were done to try to strike a balance between the property owners, the people with the agricultural land, and the property owners that have houses in a rural setting area. Mr. Pittner and them did an excellent, excellent job on this. They took it down from something like a few thousand acres square miles in Fayette County to four hundred and seventy-five square miles in Fayette County to this last one here, it, within a mile of a power line, to two hundred and twenty. So the area has been decreased in Fayette County of how much of this county can be turned into a solar farm? So they did outstanding job on this. The agricultural people do have the right to, to be disagree with this because people ought to be able to make money off their land. Farming, if there's, that's their business, then solar power is a business they should run too. But the people that live around those farms or in the county should also be protected. It was voted down on the development committee because the people that have interest in the solar farms and such as that feel that that's too stringent ruling, and it may be. This was just our first try at trying to develop a regulation on this solar farm industry so we don't end up with what has happened in the past with TBA crashing lines across people's property using eminent domain. So this was a first-time effort, it may pass, it may fail, but I think we ought all to thank Mr. Pittner and Ms. Smalley and them for the work they've done.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, what, what is the benefit to the county? We, we've got citizens in this county that are against it, and we're gonna take land out of agricultural and, and put it in, in this development. It's not gonna create jobs for our citizens because this is all run computer, perhaps from another state. But what is, I mean, and, and I'm not being antagonistic, I'm just asking a question. What is the monetary benefit to Fayette County for us to pass things that are going to encourage solar farm development in our county?
Commissioner, uh, tonight, we, let me remind you that there are regulations already on the books, and most of these regulations are either trying to restrict or modify those regulations. I'm trying to look up this one right here. I don't think it's actually modifying, it's actually a restriction down to a smaller area. So that was the intention of this particular one. The other ones that will follow are ones that were, I think they were amending the current regulation to be more specific. Uh, I don't have those numbers in front of me tonight. Um, there's not a lot of benefit to the county as such. You mean, overall, it's another business, the taxes, and I'd have, without me giving an opinion one way or another, because I don't have the data in front of me right now, um, there's not a great deal of revenue, additional revenue, let's put it that way, being generated. But that being said, the resolution you've got in front of you now is not to have solar or not to have solar. Is, solar is available as adopted by the commission, so, and this is a, an effort to restrict it to a certain area or certain, certain place in the county based on the line. So that's, that's what this is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Mr. Walker.
Yeah, we looked at this, we've looked at the last several months at development, and part of what has come around on it has been, there's some financial parts that they need out of this, I 100% agree. But the other regulations we're trying to put into place, I think we're just trying to, we, we keep creating more regulations, and where, where, where is this going to end? What's going to be next, what we're going to regulate out of Fayette County? And that, that's my problem with it.
Yeah. Commissioner, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, um, I think the mile limit is a good start to regulate these, where these solar farms can be. Um, we, we cut the area down, and what I'm afraid of, one day in the future, we're going to wake up and we won't recognize Fayette County. So that's one reason why I support it. Now, um, I, we do have, I've got a family farm that's under one of these lines, but I can assure you as of right now, I have no desire whatsoever to put a solar farm on it, but I just think this is a, this is a good way to regulate and make sure it's not all over the county. We had to start somewhere.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, not hearing any. Is there a motion to be made?
I move, I move we approve it.
There is a second.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Farley seconds the motion. Give me just a second, please. Motion is to approve the amendment from the planning commission to restrict the solar farms within one mile of a once, 161 KV TBA right of way. Uh, motion's made and property seconded. When your name is called, yes if you're in favor and no if you're against. Commissioner Dacus.
Clarification, sir.
Yes, sir.
Presently, without us passing this, they can have a solar farm anywhere in the county. Is that correct?
Technically, yes. There's a lot of restrictions that have to go into it, but it is right.
Okay, so this will restrict them within the mile of the TBA line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smalley, if I say something that's wrong, yell really loud. All right, Commissioner Dacus?
No.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Olswody?
No.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
No.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
No.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
No.
While I'm counting up the vote, is there anyone who'd like to change their vote? Not hearing any changes. The vote passes, 12 in favor, six against. The next item on our agenda tonight is, give me one second, augment various elements in the regulations of solar power generation or pit. Uh, it's on page 12. Ms. Smalley, would you like to review that for us, please?
Um, let's see, I'm trying to make sure that I've got the right one here. Okay. Um, so this makes, uh, a few just little changes. The primarily major change is going to be section six and section seven. Um, currently, section six reads that, uh, Article Five, general provisions, um, we need to add the following, section 13 dot four dot five, the site must have direct access for its construction traffic to a state highway or an unpaved county road connected to a state highway and not principally for access of residents. Uh, in section seven, it will be revised for the Board of Appeals shall require the approved facility design to include a written statement duly executed by empowered parties running with the land, reciting the language of sections 13 dot three one, 13 dot three two, dirt, 13 dot three, three, and 13 dot three four, and 13 dot four two, and acknowledging that these provisions are continuing obligations governing the facility and the nonconformity with any of them shall be grounds for the Board of Appeals to revoke the special exception following documentation of the nonconforming at a public hearing and complete cessation and use and removal of the facility. The purpose of these two, um, with section six, that would be to keep them, um, primarily off of the county roads so that it'll be either T-dot or unpaved roads. Um, as far as the, um, section seven, that is all for financial assurance on it, financial satisfactory, because, um, at the end of the day, what we're trying to really get is, uh, so make sure that we have a five-year principal on the bond so that if something goes wrong, we have the money to go in and, and, um, clean this up.
Planning Commission, uh, did what, and the development committee did what?
The planning commission gave it a favorable recommendation, the development committee gave it an unfavorable recommendation. But the, the purpose of these, like I said, is basically to, um, just to make sure that we have the financial insurance so that we can, in worst case scenario, clean this up, um, because we don't want it to be an eyesore for our citizens, and we don't want it to be something too blight. Um, and like I said, we definitely want to keep them off of the county roads so that our taxpayers are not paying for the damage to those roads and that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Perkins?
Yes, sir.
Uh, explain to me real quick, the, the five-year, uh, bond on that, how does that work?
Ms. Smalley, can you, I'll tell you what, Commissioner, can we, let's go through the public hearing and see if there's any comments from the public, then let me give you some time after that to ask that question if you don't mind. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Just one second, please.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, and members of the commission, for the opportunity to speak in support of the zoning resolution. I've been sitting in the audience, watching the screen here, seeing a lot of familiar faces.
Can you sort of give us your name and address, please?
Oh, well, I was getting around to that, yeah. I just wanted to say hello to some familiar faces and some hello to some new ones, too. For the purpose of the minutes, my name is Ed Allen. My wife, Angela, and our two daughters reside at 18505 Highway 194. Our property borders both Highway 194 and Feathers Chapel. Before I get too far into this, um, I'd just like to say that if you're involved in a business or if, or have a financial relationship with someone pursuing a solar farm, and the nature of that financial relationship would give the impression of bias on this issue, then you should do the honorable and proper thing by disclosing that conflict and recusing yourself in voting on this resolution. Uh, you heard from Mr. Gary Bullwinkle earlier. All of you are familiar with his lawsuit against the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, Gary and I are friends. However, we have to agree to disagree on this resolution. Uh, we found ourselves on different sides of the issue, um, but in his defense, if someone was trying to put a 4,000 acre solar farm in my backyard, I'd probably be suing also. But that lawsuit and the need to avoid others that are certain to come with future solar farm applications are precisely why this body should pass this resolution. It is absolutely irresponsible for the decision makers of this county to employ a zoning code that does not address financial responsibility for these large-scale seller projects. This resolution seeks to correct this. Fayette County has approximately 100 miles of TBA lines. Looking forward, we need focus and clarity on what the county is willing to accept with respect to future solar farms. New applications can't simply be punted to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's not planning, and it'll only lead to more litigation at taxpayer expense. I'd like to take a moment and thank Planning Director John Pittner and his staff. They've spent considerable time working on these amendments, and they've done an enormous amount of research to ensure that they're a good fit for the very unique needs here in Fayette County. This proposed amendment before you tonight has been before the planning commission not once, not twice, but three times. All returned with a favorable recommendation. We're all familiar with section six. It states, for those in the audience, the site must have direct access for its construction traffic to a state highway or to an unpaved county road connected to a state highway, not principally used for access to residences. Last month, Chairman Gordon Tomlin and members of the planning commission voted to retain this section with a larger resolution. They acted in the interest of safety and minimizing costs to the county. Going forward, I hope that you will too. I mentioned a moment ago that our property borders Feathers Chapel on the west side of Highway 194. Feathers Chapel is similar to many of our rural county roads. Originally, they were used for simple farm to market access. They're narrow, they're winding, and there is no shoulder in which to pull over. Residential development along these rural roads has exploded over the last decade. The construction traffic associated with a solar farm is not the same type of construction traffic associated with residential development. Solar farm construction would consist of heavy use and heavyweight traffic. We can expect 18-wheeler semi trucks carrying tons of concrete and steel, mobile cranes and semi-trailers hauling earthmoving equipment. This construction traffic would compete with residential traffic, school buses, and farm equipment. And Commissioner District Three, which is where I reside, according to tnmap.tn.gov, the distance between Feathers Chapel and Worth Road is approximately one mile. Within that mile, there are 36 flag lots, and that's just on the south side of the road. Allowing construction access for 18-wheeler semi trucks on rural county road is a recipe for disaster. Just wait until a teenage driver or a tractor pulls out in front of those 18-wheelers and he has to lock up the brakes. All of you are good people, and you don't want that on your conscience. Those of you who represent the larger suburban areas of our counties such as Pipperton and Oakland, as you know, new subdivisions are afforded a construction access for the sole purpose of not having to compete with residential traffic. If you happen to live in a subdivision, it's highly unlikely you want 18-wheelers and mobile cranes being transported down your residential street. You would not want that on your street any more than I would want it on mine. Now, let's talk money. Road maintenance costs are not driven by the amount of traffic. It's driven by the weight of that traffic. According to the United States General Accounting Office, road damage caused by a single 18-wheeler was the equivalent of damage caused by 9,000 cars. Construction period of a solar farm consisting of hundreds or even thousands of acres could last years. Long-term use of rural county roads with heavyweight construction vehicles will increase road maintenance costs and place a financial burden on the county. I'll remind you that it's not the out-of-state investors who will bear these costs. It will be the resident taxpayers. Those who cannot explain why they're putting the safety of our residents second and have no reply on how to pay for the increased infrastructure cost always default to the argument of, well, it's my land, I can do whatever I want with it. Okay, let's think about that. Can I put a casino on my property? Can I put an airport on my property? If you can do whatever you want, whenever you want on your property, why do we have zoning? Why does the county have a growth plan? Why does the county have an office of planning and development? I'll tell you why. Because future development should be in harmony with, not in conflict with, the existing development. Placing an industrial use development in an area that's zoned residential with existing homes will create conflict. At last week's development committee, Commissioner Farley spoke in support of this resolution, and I'd like to publicly thank him for that. Though the other members of the committee disagreed with this position, he was willing to stand up for the safety of our citizens. Planning Director John Pittner made a valid point. We can always amend what's before you tonight if we find out later it needs to be tweaked. Commissioner Farley exercised good judgment with respect to responsible development and zoning. I hope you will agree with him and the members of our planning commission. Please keep an open mind to erring on the side of safety. Thank you for your time.
Not seeing anybody else who initially said they were in favor of it, so if, for those who are against it, is there anybody who'd like to speak against it?
Yeah.
Just completely, please come to the podium, podium.
Gary Bullwinkle, 5780, Yum Yum Road, Somerville, Tennessee.
Five minutes, Gary.
Okay. Um, section six, basically, if it's restricted to have access on the state highways, that will, uh, lower the amount of land from the 220 acres, uh, 220 square miles to something like 60 or
lower the amount of land from the two hundred twenty acres, two hundred twenty square miles to something like sixty or eighty or so. That you have just from the congruence of the transmission lines with the state highways. And there's some other, so I don't know what that's going to do to your previous resolution. The section seven with the bonding situation is another proof, and I I agree with Mr. Allen, that this process should not be done by the BZA. But the BZA is forced to do it because of the state law concerning the special exception. But the BZA and its powers given to it by the state legislature. They do not have the administration of bonds to the tunes of tens of millions of dollars or any bonds at all, nor is it in their training or education regimen of what they're supposed to be doing. The bonding seems to be linked to the, I don't know if the solar junkyard is going to be in the third part or not. But here we are in a rural residential area faced with having a large six square mile area that might, within years, become a solar junkyard. Now, how does that fit in with open spaces and agriculture? It doesn't, and yet, and the risk is tremendous. And going to the point of Commissioner Leggins, like, what does it do for the county? What does it do to the county? And so these are undetermined risks in the tens of millions of dollars, and that goes to the effect that a moratorium ought to be done. And we should go back to the fork in the road where we did this legislation, not having the idea that they had parked large energy companies that wanted to come to Fayette County and do these TVA projects that TVA had plans, but y'all didn't know about. So the bonding situation, in my view, you ought to have a piece of paper in front of you from at least two insurance companies that said we would bond such a an event, and this is how it's going to be underwritten through the years. You don't get performance bonds for twenty years, you don't get them for five years because the risk changes every single year. And so if we don't have it on paper, you don't have anything, and the BZA is not qualified. In these resolutions, when they say we're going to get a written letter and we're going to do this. This is not the way the BZA works when they're getting a setback for your pool in the backyard and you want to, you know, appeal it. It's the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this is like a gallon jar having fifty five gallons of oil. Put it into, one of the commissioners said, when is it going to end? It's not going to end. This is a terrible thing for Fayette County. Everything that you have on paper doesn't exist. And so how is that good for the residents of the county? How is that good for the commissioners? How was that good for the legislative process for this? How is it good right now? So the other thing about the bonding, when it says it's running with the land. I don't understand how the Board of Zoning Appeals can go back and require a contract and a premium to be paid on a bond that wasn't in their minds when they were given their original contracts for the solar leasing. How can you go back and retroactively put contractual estimates? If you do that and if you put the liability on the landowner when it becomes a solar junkyard and they don't have enough bonding to do it, and the company folds because it's an LLC and it goes bankrupt. Then the land becomes the, you can put a lien on their land, the county, that's what junkyard does, you can put a lien on it. So here the county is thinking that they're going to put a lien on these landowners that want to have a better income for their families and we're given a vehicle to do that. And then they lose their land over this. I don't see why the companies aren't the ones liable, and this is a, it's a cluster. And it's going to stay a cluster, it's much too big for us. It's hundreds of millions of dollars, and we're just talking and waving our hands in the air and going to vote on it. Get some paperwork and get some documentation by experts on what we're doing. If we can't afford to do that, how can we afford to put the county at this much risk? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak against this? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Commissioner Goodrow.
Information from Mr. Bullwinkle. Can someone address the bond issue that he raised about how it would be performed? My indication or my understanding, what he was saying is those that are already involved, how do you make them put a bond to, for the cleanup? I think was one issue, if I understood correctly. Another is, bonds don't go, don't go for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So that's the second one I'd like to be addressed. And if they fold. Where's the, where's the bond sit for that? Who's responsible for it? So can those three issues be addressed? And then fourth, I'd like to know why the Development Committee had an unfavorable recommendation. So those four things.
All right, let me see if I can get you a couple of answers on the first couple. Ms. Molly, do you have anything to add to those?
Um, the only thing that I really know about the bonding is that he said that we need five years cash on the principal of the bond. And, you know, his thought, I know with this, I hear people saying, well, how are you going to get landowners to do this? Well, in the case of the Yum Yum project, they've already got fourteen landowners that's come together and decided that they want to do this kind of thing, you know, and are willing to take that. So that's really all I have to add to that. I did have a point of clarification that I'm sure Mr. Pittner has pointed out before, but that I did want to reiterate. Even though he told me probably just to be quiet. I did want everybody to know that since the mid nineties, we have not had any land in Fayette County that is actually zoned agricultural. That can be considered a use of it, but it's all zoned either residential, commercial, or industrial. Another point that I did want to bring up on this is the reason why we keep bringing up these amendments was because we took a one-year moratorium and we did as much research as we could with all surrounding counties. I mean, we even looked into regs in California, just everything that we could find about this. Just to create the original document, and we knew that there were going to be some tweaks along the way, but we knew we had to have standards in place and get ahead of this thing. The only other thing that I would like to add with it as well is people are concerned about this being a higher density or more of an industrial use. If you look at it, you know, say just on five hundred acres, okay? If you're looking at getting septic on five hundred acres for development, then, you know, we usually have about two point five acre minimum, I would say, if you're dealing with soils for septic. So that's two hundred houses that could be built on that five hundred acres. That people would be going into, you know, traffic counts for going in and in and out of that area, different things like that. Versus these solar farms that are actually, once they are put on the ground, someone only comes out and checks on them as needed. And therefore, there's nothing that's going to be built on this property for thirty or forty years other than this solar thing. That's all I'd like to add.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I don't know if my questions really got answered. The length of the bond. If this, if the life of these things can be twenty years. How do we, if I understood correctly, she said something about a five, five years worth of bond.
Principal, yes, sir.
So beyond that, explain the bond process and how that would work, because we don't, I think the concern is that to have some assurances twenty years that this is going to be taken care of.
Commissioner, let me give a little clarification. I don't know if it's going to answer your question or not, but at least I'll give you a little insight. Currently, what I'm reading in section eight on page thirteen. It says that the Board of Appeals shall obtain satisfactory financial assurance that the facility will be fully disassembled or removed from the site within one year after cessation of it. Now, that's what's currently in the zoning. Go to is something more specific. Identifies a surety bond in favor of each landowner making up the site so that they have funding sufficiently to completely disassemble or remove the facility should, you know, should have finding that's and a whole bunch of things. Basically, there's not operation. And if they don't have it and they go to a certain status, they'll become a junkyard. I think that's in here also. So the Board of Zoning Appeals has the discretion to identify the length of term, the type. Well, right now they have the ability to do the length of term and the type, which will be going to is actual bonds. They're specifying a certain instrument to use for the surety. And each of these, I don't know if they'll be different, but as they learn how to do this a bit more, they will be able to have some flexibility on making sure that that instrument is here, that length of time. So like I said, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what the regulation is asking.
Right now, there isn't an surety that they will be responsible for the cleanup, and this puts in that there will be an surety that it will be.
There currently is one, it's in a general tongue, a general description. And they're trying to refine that so it's more specific to a bond. That section eight, where you can read through there, it says what it is, and then it's to read. Sort of look through this on the bottom of page thirteen in your packet, or bottom of thirteen, I think it's, yeah, page thirteen. And you had two other questions, I don't know why you didn't touch on those.
Retroactive bonds. I think that's something that Mr. Bullwinkle was addressing. How do you go back and one that's already in place and have them put a bond up?
Ms. Molly, the current, you talked about the current Yum Yum facility. Is there a bond on that one, or did they agree to one in the initial approval through the BCA?
I know that they at least agreed to one through the initial, yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, there is, and I thought there was something in there, so there's something in there. I don't think it's been identified exactly how to fix it or what to take as financial assurance. So I think Mr. Pittner would like to have some expertise, and I can honestly tell you, I don't think he's he's been working on the planning aspect more than that, but he needs, he said he wants to take time and talk to experts on what type of instrument he can obtain or get the landowners to obtain to provide that assurance.
Okay, and then lastly, the unfavorable recommendation. What, why was there an unfavorable recommendation of this resolution by the Development Committee?
Commissioner Farley.
Many different things, I guess, I'm probably not the one to say for sure, but one thing was a problem with the assurance financially. If you read the rest of the changes to, on page fourteen to the mount. It says that that fund's got to be hedged against inflation, meaning the fund will have to go up as inflation goes up. And it also says, the words I like is the Mount Salant incentivize actual performance of the work by the part of providing the insurance. Meaning that it should be so much that they would be willing to clean it up to get some of their money back. So I think that puts a little more power in it. The main problem with this and the problem I had with it was about the road for construction and such as that. It says unpaid road to state road. I think there has got to be a better way to regulate them during the construction phase, because after construction phase, they're gone. If they could go to a county road that didn't have residences on it between it and the state road, I think they should be able to and put up a bond to repair the road after they get through. But that wasn't included, it was just stated an unpaid road to a state road, and I think that's one of the reasons it didn't get voted in.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Goodrow.
This is Commissioner Seals.
Commissioner Seals, yes, sir.
I sit on the Development Committee as well, and I was, I was not in favor of this particular piece of the of the regulation. Think there's a lot more ambiguity in it than there were answers. I don't know that we've got the bonding issue worked out all the way. I believe it was Mr. Bullwinkle that was just speaking. He is absolutely correct. If you, if the LLC is the one responsible for holding up their end of the bargain and they're the ones going out of business, there's really no incentive for them to to stand up for the bond or anything else. So I had a lot more questions than I did answers, and I wasn't comfortable voting for something with that many holes in it, in my opinion.
Commissioner Norton.
Commissioner Norton.
I've got, I'm sorry, Ms. Smiley, Smiley, but you probably be, you might be able to answer this. Under section six. The road surface, the gravel road surface county road. Now, I'm, I'm not a big landowner. I got, I got a small lot out here off of Harold Road. But if I want to build a house on it, given this verbiage. I can't do that. Because you've limited, I'm hearing concrete trucks, eighteen wheelers. And building supplies come in on eighteen wheelers out here. We just built two houses out here, and they came in on eighteen wheelers. We've had multiple concrete trucks down through here. So I'm a little perplexed as how it is that we're going to be able to handle that. And moreover, I'm really concerned about us as a body regulating what landowner can do with his land. Now, I, I, I heard Mr. Allen refer to putting something on his land. And there's something, I'm not sure where he was going with it. I know he said if he wanted to put an airport on it, I think he said he couldn't do it. Well, I beg to differ. Governor Wilder's got one up there on his property right now. And he's been long past, but it still sits there. So, yeah, you can put a runway on your property, apparently. I don't know where we're going with this resolution and this section. It just sounds to me. Well, number one, it doesn't smell good. You're telling me that I can't do on my property what is legitimately allowed to do because of the traffic that I'm going to have to do it with. Understand that correctly.
No, sir, Commissioner Norton, I believe you may be a little bit confused on this. This would only apply for the solar regulations. This would not apply to anyone that's building their own personal houses, would only be for the construction of solar farms.
Well, I kind of would have thought that, other than Mr. Pittner last week at the meetings said this has nothing to do with solar, this is across the board for everything.
Yes, sir.
Said that, that, that said, I can't bring an eighteen wheeler down Harold Road.
Yes, sir, if, if, if he spoke it that way, I can tell you that he did misspeak that because I have been working with him on this. And that is definitely not the intent of the regulations. We actually have in the zoning ordinance, a section specifically that governs the the solar regulations, and that's where this will be in, is within just the solar regulations.
Okay, so perhaps maybe there needs to be a little cleanup verbiage. Letting us know that this is for the solar. Here's what I see coming down the road. I see somebody, a neighbor or somebody saying they can't do that there because there's an eighteen wheeler out there. And there's nothing in this resolution I'm reading that would defend that.
Commissioner, it does go. So that's, that's the only place it could be. You mean, it's, it's in the section and it goes step one, step two, step three, and this is one of those steps. And I think what Mr., now, I'd have to go back and look or ask him, but I think what he was referring to when he was talking about this amendment is that toward the end of this list of things he wants changes, some of this isn't solar, some of it's arped. A rural preservation, I forgot what that stands.
Rural preservation and enhancement district?
It, it, that does go countywide. So on that one, so those last two or three sections, section eleven, twelve, and I believe thirteen, or maybe it's ten, eleven, and twelve, are basically referred to arped only, not solar. So that may be what it's referring to. I, I'm, I'm just guessing, but everything else is in the solar section. It refers to, it gets its authority from previous verbiage in that section.
So. So the arped is in this resolution. But that part of this resolution doesn't apply. It, it only applies to the solar fields.
Correct. Each of, each one of these specifies where in the zoning resolution it goes. It's just articles five or is in section such and such, so that you sort of need to go back to the zoning region, regulations, sort of see what it's referring to. And in section eleven, let's see, section eleven in this resolution says revise article seven provisions for land use by deleting sections. It gives a number from district boundaries. That I believe is in the arped and section twelve, again, in sections, article seven, excuse me, provisions for land use districts. I believe that's also in the arped where it's modifying it. Apparently, they changed what was in the industrial, the residential and the industrial, I believe, earlier. And for some reason, they didn't change the arped section. And this was a cleanup thing. In a perfect world, these wouldn't have been in the same resolution because it does lead into confusion because you assume that everything we start off with solar, you're going to wind up with solar all the way through, and that's not how this read, but that's what this refers to.
Okay, well, I, I want to understand it completely. I'm really concerned about public safety issue, issue there. That's a extremely important point that was brought up. I, I don't know that there's a workaround, given the resolution is written. I certainly don't want to restrict the landowner from doing what he wants to do. But yet, that's exactly what we're going to do here pretty quick. When this comes to a vote, we're going to tell the land, you know, my colleague and a good friend of mine on this board asked me, what's next? You want to tell him you can't drive his tractor down the road because it's too wide? We have to stop somewhere. I don't know where that stopping point is going to be now. But I don't, I've just, I'm just not feeling good about this resolution as written.
Thank you. Any other commissioners got any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I get the sense that we're trying to close the gate after the cows are out. We're doing restrictions now that, and this would be a question for the county attorney or for my colleague, Ms. Rice, who is an attorney. You know, the contract, as I understand it, between the landowner and the solar people was done several months ago. Based on the existing regulations and zoning that existed at that time that everybody had agreed to years ago, not contemplating solar farms, but we had agreed to it then. I, I, I hope that what we do relative to this public hearing and all the ones that we've had tonight are, can be applied to that contract. I'm not sure that we can go back and hold people to a new set of regulations that the county passes when they did business back months ago when those regulations didn't exist. But I think that, you know, we may be capricious and arbitrary in, in passing something now on, on a contract that transpired months ago. But that being said, you know, I understand that now we're trying to restrict solar because we see that we kind of got caught with our pants down, so to speak. And we exposed the county to development that now a lot of people don't like the development. But I, I just, that was the only thing I wanted to say about it. I'm in agreement with the regulations on solar. But my real question is, how do we determine the amount of the bond? These people are going to come in here and spend hundreds of millions of dollars installing this system. And who knows how much it's going to cost to dismantle it? And that's what the value of the bond should be, is whatever the cost of dismantling and disposing of these heavy metals and, and any of the environmental contents that are unfriendly to the environment. And I never did hear Ms. Smiley say, they're talking about a bond, but I don't think that if we don't put some number in there that we have a leg to stand on, it has to be a percentage of the, of the cost or, or some way. Because otherwise, you know, I think a judge is going to rule, but you know, we just reached up in the air and pulled a number. And I haven't heard anybody talk about how much these bonds are going to be for. And that's what concerns me because if it costs ten million dollars to take it down, and we're only got a bond for five million. Last time I checked our fund balance and all, we can't afford to clean it up because the landowner is going to walk away from it. And if he walks away from it, then ultimately the county is going to own the property.
Yes, sir. I will add that I know that Mr. Pittner has been working very closely with code enforcement and the gentleman that is handling taking down things like this for us. And they are currently in the process of trying to work up based on the particular type of panels that they are putting in and different things. They are currently trying to work up what that cost would approximately be so they can add the proper, the proper percentage to it for, you know, for the duration of it. So they do not have that number exactly yet, but that is something that they are working on very actively.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walker?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this passed out of committee with no recommendation. It was not an unfavorable recommendation, but no recommendation. Is that correct?
Give me one second. I'll defer to chairman on this one. I don't remember. I know one of them came out, but I can't remember which one.
All right. And part of, part of what, when we were in committee is more restriction, same thing, the following TV line, the road deal, and yes, we've got a safety issue we need to look at, but we keep restricting what landowners can do with their land. And that's a problem. The bond, and this goes back several, several meetings. Mr. Pittner was trying to require the landowners to be holders of this bond. Where they, where not the county, but the landowners would be the holders of this bond where they had something in place to where five years from now, they get, company goes belly up, they had something to go back on the company's with. And that was, that was the reason the financial end of this was put in place, trying to protect the landowners as well.
Mayor, Commissioner Powers here.
Powers, yes, sir.
And that's, I was going to ask Ms. Smiley that exact same question. I have heard her say that the fourteen owners of the land for the Yum Yum project right now, they are agreeing to put up the bonds themselves, correct?
Yes, sir. That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
And so it will, it's, it's my understanding from you saying that, that it's the landowners that are going to have the bonds put in place so that if this goes belly up and the property needs to be reverted, then those bonds that are being held by the landowners are what we would come back on to rely upon for cleanup. Is that correct?
I believe that was what it was, how it was handled in the Yum Yum case. To be honest with how he is trying to beef this one up on that, I wasn't as close with him on that part, just because I'm, I'm not a banker and I don't know about bonds and different things like that. I apologize.
I understand, but, but for the Yum Yum project, we are, that is taken care of, and then we're trying to, and as has been said, we're trying to come up with regulations to help us as we're going forward with this new system. One more question I had regarding the Yum Yum project. A lot's been said about that. I, I know Commissioner Leggett mentioned about going back retroactively. If I remember correctly, because I sit on the Development Committee as well, I believe that the Yum Yum project was under the understanding they know that the regulations are fluid, that we're working, this is a complete work in progress. And they, and I remember if I'm wrong, that Invenogy said they would comply with anything that we put in as we're going along. So in that regard, and we do have that in writing, correct?
I'm, I'm sure among all of his hundreds of papers, yes, sir, he does, because that is correct.
So that is definitely something that we are able to, and since this is the only project on the table right now, it, that's affected by going back retroactively. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
Other comments? Any commissioners or questions?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Seals, Robbie Seals. You were saying that there were some questions you had or y'all couldn't come to an agreement on. Could you go over what those were? And if there, and if there is, if there's still an opportunity to resolve those issues?
I'll do my best. Commissioner Walker spoke about it as well. The, the amount of stipulation for putting on landowners was one of the biggest concerns, I think several of us had. Also, from my point of view, we, we spoke about it a lot, is the uncertainty around the bonds themselves. If the landowners sell all of their land, let's say you, you, and Yum Yum, for instance, have fourteen different landowners. It's my understanding they no longer own their particular tracts of land. If two or three of them default on their piece of it, do we have, you know, that much less money to go back with, or are the other ones required to come up with the difference? I, I just don't feel like we had any real teeth in the financial surety of it on that end either. I don't know if that helps answer things, but.
So it seems to me that the, the biggest, one of the biggest hurdles we have, at least as being good stewards for the, for the county and its interests is the financial part. And this county runs real lean. We don't have a treasure of vast amounts of money in case something were to default. I think it's in the best interest of this county and this commission. If we give the Development Committee another opportunity to answer the questions that they still have in regards to the amount, the, the uncertainty of the, the bonds regarding the landowners. I don't know if there's a reason to rush this, this month. If there are still questions out there regarding a resolution that's before us, and it's because those questions haven't been answered, that the committee did not send it to, or they sent it to us without a recommendation. I think they should revisit that. Because I think the answers are out there. I think there's a solution. I just think it needs to be put in a resol, be put in this resolution. So with that, I'd like to table this resolution giving the Development Committee the opportunity to take care of those issues that are in question.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Perkins, second.
Gentlemen, this is a tabling motion and it is non-debatable. So if you're in favor of the tabling motion when your name is called, yes. If you're disagree with it, but no. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
No.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Bets Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Seals?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Seals?
Yes.
Boo.
You aware of that, mayor?
I'd like the mayor battered dead.
Yeah, I think we lost the mayor.
I think he hit the.
It's all yours now. We're trying to get him reconnected right now.
There's Ray Garcia. He, he's on the, on the case. All dressed up and nowhere to go. There he is. All right, folks, I'm back. All right, I'm, this is, this is a work in progress, as I said before. I'm going to be.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm, one second, please. We are, let me finish this vote. Commissioner Seals, I believe you're the last one I was on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You, I think you have stopped recording. So to take your vote.
So to take your vote, finish your vote, I think you need to make sure you're recording again.
All right, one second, please. Commissioner, Commissioner, I think it's still going out on YouTube, so I've got a recording there and I'll check it here in just a minute, though.
Okay.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
And Commissioner Walker, Bill Walker?
Yeah.
Commissioner Watkins? Stick it out there and see if he recites.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes, seventeen in favor, one against. Next item on the agenda tonight, one second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman? I have a request relative to that tabling. Would it be possible for the county attorney to work with the planning as well as the Development Committee to give us some assurance that they've got a procedure whereby the county is protected, such as certificate of insurance, where we're additionally insured on those bonds or something of that nature? He should know the proper way to do that. Right now, we don't have, I don't, I don't feel like we have anything to show that we, being the county, has protection. We're protecting the homeowner. But if the homeowner, that, that's somebody we can't compel to do anything, if they take the money and leave with it, then we still gotta clean it up. So I'd just like to have the county attorney involved and make sure he can come back with a recommendation to us.
Yes, sir. I think there's, that's very doable and probably wise. There are several other sections in that. Some of them referred with certificates running with the land and what would happen if there was a, somebody who did something wrong. And basically, they could shut down the entire project, which is gonna hurt everybody. But that was the stick that was included in there. So, but to your answer, to your question about the county attorney, we do need him involved in this.
He'll be at the Development Committees during their meetings.
We can have that. Yes, sir.
Please, thank you.
Let's see. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for increased setbacks from solar panels to dwellings and minor county roads. Ms. Molly?
Okay, this one's pretty easy. In our existing regulations, we state that no solar panels can be installed within 500 feet of any existable living dwelling unit, whether or not occupied, not owned by the owner of the lot on which the facility is located, provided this shall not govern in any way the location of a dwelling unit. And what we would like to do is we would like to add to that at the end of dwelling unit there, except that any solar volactics, photophilactic facility granted location approval after October 1st, 2020, shall not install solar panels within 1,000 feet of any existable or existing livable dwelling unit, whether or not occupied, not owned by the owner on the lot. So basically, what this is saying is that for the Yum Yum ones, since they have already gotten the approval on that, that they would still be going under the guidelines of the 500 foot. But for anything coming forward, we would want a 1,000 foot buffer around the house. Then the second part of it here, if you go down to section two, talks about no solar panels shall be located within 500 feet of the center line of any state road or major county road. So designated by the map recorded at Platbook 8, page 46 in the Office of the County Register, provided the Board of Appeals may reduce this requirement to not less than 100 feet if natural or constructed topography and/or existing land cover will be adequate to fully screen the panels to the extent of 500 feet from the center line of the subject road. What he would like to change that to read is no solar panels shall be installed within 500 feet of the center line. Let me see, hold on. I'm sure y'all don't wanna hear all of this again. Okay. And after the 500 feet of the subject road, then he adds in, except that any solar volcanic facility granted location approval after October 1st, 2020, shall not install solar panels within 500 feet of the center line of any state highway or county road, provided the Board of Appeals may reduce the requirement to not less than 200 feet from the center line if natural or constructed topography and/or existing land cover will be adequate to fully screen the panels to the extent of the 500 foot from the center line of the subject road. So basically, under both of these, the Yum Yum project would be considered grandfathered in, but anything else coming before us for approval, they would be subject to the enhanced buffers around the, both the houses and from the major roads.
Okay. And the Planning Commission sent that to the County Commission?
Yes, the Planning Commission was in favor of it, yes, sir. And from what I've heard, the Development Committee wasn't against it. But I cannot confirm that. That's just what Mr. Pittner told me.
Right, they, can, can, the Development Committee return unfavorable recommendation, correct?
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of it? Please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against this? Please raise your hand. Not seeing any of the, declare we'd close the public hearing. Is there any comments or questions from the County Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Farley?
This is just changing the depth of the setbacks, which I, I believe are excessive. And the reason I say that is I think everybody on the Development Committee and the Board ought to go down to Moscow and stand outside the facility in Moscow and listen to what you hear. You hear nothing. You don't see anything unless you're at the entrance where you can see through in there. Now, they could have done the screening better, but I think our screening is covered very well in, in the 200, in the, in the 100 and the 500 feet. We've been talking all night about these and people have been saying how horrible they are and terrible they are and such as that. I believe solar farms are a good thing. They are, they allow property owners to keep their land and, and make money at it without really changing the, the, the use of the land, other than from growing a crop, they're growing electricity, so to speak. And disturbing the, the people around them, if it's done right, and I believe Mr. Pittman and Ms. Molly's department has got it done right, the setbacks are more than adequate. On occasion, I play golf up in Millington and play there most during the summer. Well, about the end of this summer, 1st of August, as I was playing the course, I noticed a tree had fallen down and right on the other side of the trees, not 200 feet, is a few thousand acre solar farm that I never knew was there, and I'd been playing along it for months. So solar farms will not be a, I sort of people in a 500 foot setback if the topography and the, the trees and such are done, done correctly. So with all that being said, and you know, I like to talk, but with all that being said, I don't see a need to increase the setbacks from what they are originally.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes, just real quickly, I was looking back in the minutes. The, the final vote was actually a consideration to send it with no recommendation, just because of the verbiage. I know it's not much difference, but I just wanna make that clarification that we sent it with no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? Goodrow?
Mr. Goodrow?
Why the change or why the increase in the setback?
There was no request for a change in the setback. It was decided by the Planning Commission to increase the setback.
Right, I understand. I guess what I'm getting is why do they recommend an increase? What is their reason for increasing the setback?
Some of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Ms. Molly, go ahead.
Okay. I think a lot of people were highly opposed at first with the 500 foot setback. So I think this was, again, we're trying to kind of find a happy medium, both to allow for this to be harmonious i- in, in the rural area and both to, you know, allow people to enjoy their property and stuff as well, because a lot of concerns were that people said that they were going to have to look at it or different things like that. So that was why the Planning Commission looked at extending these setbacks.
But they were opposed to the setbacks because of, because it's unsightly or?
That, that was, that was some of their concern, yes, sir. A lot of them said that they had been living in, you know, the area for a long time and that that just was not what they wanted to look at next door or across the street. And that's why we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that these stay hidden.
Is there, was there an alternative to the increase of setback? To create a bigger shielding with trees or hedge or anything like that?
Um, the, I know that the Board does have the right. If this does not go through, they do have the right to, basically, they do a design review and they can tell them, you know, look, you can't take these trees down. You're gonna have to plant these trees here to, to block it or different things like that. The main concern, what we saw up on the Yum Yum project, was we did have several areas of just one acre little houses that are gonna be looking, you know, out their backyard and within 500 foot, they're gonna be looking straight at this solar stuff. And that, that is something that we've recommended to screen. But it's just something that we're trying to look at in the future, because when you really only have one acre and you're standing at the back of it, looking across a cotton field, it's kind of just right there. So that, that was their thought on it.
Any other comments from any other Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Walker?
If I remember correct, in our meeting, Mr. Pittner asked us not to make a change in the setbacks. And it came out of committee that recommendation not to change it. And that was, came straight from Mr. Pittner, that the setbacks we have now are fine, do not adopt this.
I believe you're correct. Ms. Molly, was what we have in front of us adopted by the Planning Commission?
What we have in front of us was recommended favorably by the Planning Commission, yes, sir.
And I think Commissioner Walker's right that Mr. Pittner said, may, I'm not sure if there was some discussion or whatnot, but he was not in favor of moving forward with additional setbacks himself, I believe.
Well, I, I wish he would have let me know that before this meeting, but I, I was just doing what I'm supposed to do here.
You're doing a good job too, so.
If I remember correctly, Mayor, he said it didn't come out of the, that it didn't pass out of the Planning Commission either. That's why we wonder why it was in our package to start with.
That's the reason. I asked him, it did, my understanding was it came from the Planning Commission. And if that's incorrect, then it shouldn't be in front of you tonight. If we need to be on the safe side, that probably would be appropriate motion if there's any concern about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Reeves?
Since there is some confusion, I move that we table it to come up the next time that we talk about this.
Perkins, second?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Perkins? And since this is a tabling motion, there is not, it's non-debatable. So when your name is called, please vote yes in favor, no if you're against. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
No.
Commissioner Reed, Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Bets Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Seals? Mr. Robert Seals?
Yes.
Mr. Bill Walker?
No.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Yes. All right. Say that again, please. Commissioner Watkins?
He said, yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. All right. Does anyone wish to change your vote? All right, motion passes, sixteen in favor, none against. Commissioners, I'm gonna take just a point of information real quick before we get to the next item.
Mayor, Commissioner Powers? There were two of us that voted against it.
Did I not say that? There were sixteen in favor, two against?
You said sixteen and none against.
Excuse me. I stand corrected, sixteen in favor and two against.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I've got this Zoom meeting for two hours. I've got it set from seven o'clock to nine o'clock. I do not know what happens when nine o'clock gets here. So if by chance this closes out, look for your emails for an additional meeting. And we were also for the public. If you'll just hang tight or go back to YouTube, and it should be there. Commissioner Powers?
Yes. Do you have a paid subscription for this, for the county?
Yes, sir.
Then it, even though you've got it set for two hours, it should go ahead and run? It only shuts off if you're doing the free and it shuts you off after your free minutes. It should continue on. But thank you for the, the, the thought that it might not.
Well, after me freezing up before, I wanna make sure that I'm not freezing up again, so.
No, I understand. Thank you, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda tonight is a rezoning from B1 to B3 from Mr. Harris, and it's outside of Moscow. Ms. Molly?
Yes, sir. This is actually for the, the members that are familiar with this area. This is actually right across the street from the, the solar farm on 57. It's at the corner of Pine Tree and Highway 57. And this is where the old Holy Cow Restaurant used to be before it burned down. Mr. Harris has purchased it and he wishes to switch it over to B3 for community business for a small landscaping nursery. Currently, right now, he does have, he does have approval out there just for storage of his tractor and his mulch. But he would like to get it rezoned to B3 so that he can have a small landscaping nursery there. The Planning Commission did recommend this favorably. And if I look back at my notes here, it looks like the Development Committee came out of it with a favorable recommendation to, according to Mr. Pittner.
I believe it's correct this time. All right. At this time, we'll consider ourselves in public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against this rezoning? All right. Yes, sir. Are you speaking, Mr., this is Mr. Harris?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I assume that you're speaking in favor of it.
Yes, sir. Yes, excuse me. I appear as I was at work when I had to leave to come here. But, but yes, I, I purchased that because it was a restaurant there before and that's what I want to continue to put there. And not real, not realizing that I would have to go through all of this in order to put a restaurant on a facility that was already a restaurant prior to. So the small landscaped nursery is not one of these nursery, this large, like the ones on the other end of popular or anything like that. It's a, it's a topic for the public and the subdivision on Pine Tree have been petitioned. And the majority that I spoke to, everybody that I spoke to back there was in agreeance with it. They had no objection to it. Matter of fact, they thought it would be quite convenient to them because of the, currently, they, after four o'clock, they having to drive to Cuyahoga or to Somerville for a sandwich. And so I would like the Commission would to allow me to resolve this problem. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And anyone who'd like to speak against it? Since no one likes to speak against it, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I move we approve.
This chairman, I move, we approve.
I second it. Commissioner Seals.
Commissioner Steve Reeves, I, Commissioner Seals. One second, please. Vote, if you're in favor of the resolution, vote yes when your name is called. If you're against it, vote no, please. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Is there anyone who'd like to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Folks, we're down about a quarter of the agenda tonight. All right, so we're to the place on elections and appointments. In your packet, where you've got election notice public and have been reviewed by the county clerk, are there any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
I like to motion we approve.
Commissioner Powers, second by Commissioner Farley. All the, if you're in favor, please vote yes. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is adoption of rules and procedure for the next year. Starting, those are in your packet and provided, they are identical to last year's. Are there any additions, corrections to be made?
Norton moves to approve.
Powers.
Right, seconds.
Commissioner Norton, motion. Commissioner Powers, second. If you're in favor, please vote yes. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo, uh, Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any, eighteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is election of chairman. I will put this over to the chairman pro tem, Mr. German, to conduct the meeting.
Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for our chairman for this coming year. Norton would like to nominate the mayor. All right, we're.
Perkins second.
Mayor's been nominated by Commissioner Norton.
Perkins second.
Okay, Perkins second. Any other nominations? If not, I need a motion that we have elect him by acclamation. So move Norton. Norton made that motion. Yes. I'll in favor say yes.
Yes.
Do we have to have a roll call, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Afraid so. Will you maybe run down through it?
Yeah, if you would.
Okay. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion is passed, eighteen in favor, none against. Gentlemen, thank you. Gentlemen and lady, thank you very much. Yeah, I've got, I've got, I gotta go to the next one. Hold on a second. Um.
Yeah, set the salary.
Yes, sir. I'll tell you what, can we set the sal, if you'd let me take a moment, a privilege, let's set both salaries at the same time since I got an idea they're going to be the same. And I'll just get that one after we elect the, the vice, the chairman pro tem. How about?
It's good. I make a motion that we leave the salary the same as last year. German.
Okay.
Second, Norton.
Okay.
I think we ought to cut it in half.
After tonight?
Still nothing. Budget cutting.
Who made the same, Commissioner Jordan made the, Norton made the same. All right. This is the salary, the salary, as if those in the public would like to know, the salary is no additional compensation, but it has to go on record as specifying it. Commissioner German, would you like to make that salary for the chairman pro tem also?
Yes, both.
Okay.
Same as last year.
Do both. That, that simplifies it just a little bit anyway. Um.
We need to elect pro tem.
We'll catch that one just a minute, but we'll have the salary set up beforehand. Although, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone who wants to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Uh, the next item is chairman pro tem. The mo, the floor is now open for that position.
Norton nominates Willie German.
Rice second, if it needs a second.
Okay. There any other further nominations?
Moving nominations.
Cease and he'd be elected by acclamation, Leggett.
Okay. Do you have a second on that?
Norton.
Commissioner Norton, all right. By acclamation, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner, um, German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Anyone who wants to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner German.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. We are election of committees. The committees are in your packet. The only change from last year, if you remember, Commissioner Walker from La Grange resigned. And we put Commissioner Jordan in that slot. I believe that was personnel and education, if I'm not mistaken. Other than that, I think it's the same as last year. Those are for y'all's consideration. Floor is open for a motion.
Oglesby moves for their approval.
Rice second.
Okay, Commissioner Oglesby, second, Commissioner Rice. You're in favor of it, please vote yes when your name is called. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
No.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passes seventeen in favor, one against. All right, the next item on the agenda tonight are planning commission members. I've proposed two nominees, Mr. Paul Lewis from, in Moscow area and Mr. Don Fletcher. I think he lives back toward the Russell area. Mr. Lewis is currently running Lewis Hardware in Moscow. And Mr. Fletcher currently works for Lehman Roberts as a quality construction engineer for that firm. They build roads. Both of these gentlemen have a long history in Fayette County and also bring a lot of talents to the board. And thus my nomination, I presented in front of development committee. And they received a proof, a mere recommendation of approval there.
I can motion we accept him.
Our second, Commissioner Seals.
Commissioner Farley, Commissioner Seals. All right, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is industrial development board members. I have two nominations to be put up. One is Mr. Steve Crafton. He is owner operator of Air Bear in Summerland, was actually Fayette County Industrial Park. They are a materials handling facilitator. They basically move stuff by pipes and through air. He goes nationwide and install, installs things and he's considered to, to serve. And Mr. Vip Lewis is former county commissioner and former clerk and master. He's also, I assume he's former owner of hardware, Lewis Hardware in Moscow. Both of them have agreed to serve on the ID board. Those names have been put in nomination.
Mr. Mayor, this is Oglesby. I'm move for their approval. Second.
Okay, I got, who was the second, please?
Reeves.
Commissioner Reeves, thank you. All right, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Seeing none, eighteen in favor. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Uh, let's see. The next item on the agenda tonight is library board members. Two members have been forwarded to, for your consideration, Mr. Ronald Turner and Miss Melissa Fergie. Uh, both of those are Fayette County residents. That was a question to committee. These, I've talked to Miss Laura Winfrey and these have come through their board as recommendations. They are serving out terms of two individuals who could not complete theirs. If I'm not mistaken, I believe both of these terms end next year, so these are short-term terms, if I'm not mistaken. Commissioner Perkins, I said, you're on the library board. Do you have any, any insight or any comments?
None, except I know the, I know Melissa Fergie, I've known her for many, many years. And her mother actually serves on the board. Melissa will be serving on our regional board. And so she is, like, she comes from a great family.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept him.
Okay, Commissioner Farley?
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Seals, okay. All right, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any, eighteen in favor, none against, motion passes. Uh, the next two items are bonds. One second, can we put those on the same motion? Uh, I want to ask that you entertain to approve both of these on the same motion, simply to speed things up. One is a property assessors bond. Uh, this is Mr. Ward. He was just elected every four years. He has to renew his bond at his election and this is that. And the Public Works Board bonds are also similar. Uh, they have to do theirs, I believe, every two years. And I believe, uh, Mr. Doughty and Mr. Frank are in the audience. If they've got any comments on that as far as their term, uh, if I'm incorrect, please let me know.
They're gone.
They're gone, they're gone, all right. All right, well, if that means said, uh, if I could entertain a motion to approve both of those.
Approve Perkins.
Commissioner Perkins, Dr. Second?
Second Norton.
Okay, thank you very much. And let me write this my property assessor and okay, um, great. Yes, if you'd agree. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any, motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. All right, uh, if there's financials reports in your packet, you get with appropriate official. Next item, and gentlemen, I've only got a couple of things and we'll take this real quick for the mayor's report. Uh, Governor Lee extended the authority to have electronic meetings through October, but in October, you got to be a little bit more stringent about making sure you meet the open meetings rules. We'll be talking with his office and C T A S to make sure we're doing that. I don't expect any changes, but there may be have, the notice and paper may have to be a little bit more, uh, specific. If it is, we will, um, of course, make those changes. The second thing is the delinquent taxes committee. We've got to meet on that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, those were those four individuals, Mr. Farley, Mr. Reeves, Mr. Dacus, and I believe Mr. German, but I'm not positive on that. Have agreed to serve on that committee. I'll have to go back. And basically as for properties that didn't, that were up for auction for taxes and did not receive a bid and the county had to bid it in. There were several properties, but only two of them did not put a financial or environmental burden on the county and we will address those at that committee. Uh, next item is sheriff's report. Uh, Sheriff Riles or Inspector Garcia would like to speak?
No, sir, report stands as is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, Board of Education is Superintendent Smith at the audience?
No, sir.
Okay, and since everybody else has gone home, we'll just move right on to the voting committee.
We've covered everything, we've covered everything except the county boundary. The old school board and the Summerville Elementary contracts and I'll let you cover both of them.
Uh, could you repeat that?
We've covered everything except for the county boundary discussion and then the old school board and the Summerville elementary professional services contract and I'll let the mayor handle both of them.
Okay, on the, on the county boundary contract, uh, discussion, I've talked to Yan's office and essentially what the way they want to handle it is a private act that'll have to go through Nashville. It'll be one for Fayette County and one for Shelby County. So there's got to be a coordination of resolutions between the two counties and we're moving forward to try to arrange something. I don't think it'll be a problem on our side, but I've seen politics in Shelby County, so I'm not sure exactly what I'm running into on that one. But as we put together something, I'll keep you informed and it'd have to be voted on here before it goes to Nashville. And then it will have to be a two thirds vote when it comes back from Nashville here. So, and essentially what we're trying to do is fix it to where it is now and what the property is being assessed as by the county who's assessing it and getting, uh, getting a description that will clear up several questions. As far as the, uh, contracts, whatnot, those will appear later in the agenda. Anything else? Commissioner Farley?
That's all, sir, thank you.
Okay, next item is Health and Welfare. Commissioner Reeves?
Mr. Chairman, we met on fourteenth, uh, Commissioners President Leggett, Perkins, German, myself, Seals and Goodrow. I'm gonna go through it pretty quick. Uh, Director Miller did give us a report. He did report that we did get the block grant. So we'll be getting two new ambulances, similar to what we did last year. The mayor's got a contract on Phase One study of the parcel of land out there where we want to put the animal shelter. He did report that, uh, the accelerator for the C W D, uh, for the state is not going to be ready, but the state promised us that they would not dispose of any deer carcasses here in the county, again, like they did last year. We do have, uh, we'll be talking about this and budget, we need to renew a mental health contract. Uh, we did approve that and then we had an ambulance that did have a wreck and we will be approving to bring in that insurance proceeds to get another ambulance. Uh, so we'll be talking about that at budget. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, next item on agenda tonight is Personnel Committee. And I believe Commissioner Lillard's in charge of that. He was not able to make the meeting. And let me just sort of review it real quick. I think I semi chaired it. Uh, the sheriff presented his, um, plan, which is to be read into the minutes tonight, which is reason for having in front of Personnel Committee. The, basically what he did, he added a section in there to put step raises and classifications for jobs. Um, that takes care of the stipend that was included in the budget this past year. And, uh, there was discussion at the committee about moving forward and make and making some commitment to move, uh, keeping the stipend amount in the next several budgets. We did talk a couple of things about, uh, not an error, but a change in law that had to do with part time. And on page fourteen, I believe it is, it specifies thirty-two hours as a part time individual. According to the ACA healthcare law, uh, thirty hours is the cutoff. So sheriff is asking to change that from thirty-two to thirty. Uh, Inspector Garcia, did I leave out anything?
No, sir, I believe that was it.
Okay, uh, there is no, this does not require a motion or anything. It's just a matter of reading into the minutes and become part of the minutes. And I'll make sure Ms. Sue has a copy of it here so that can be included. Uh, that was all that happened during Personnel Committee. Uh, next item on the agenda tonight is Education Committee. Commissioner Dacus?
Mr. Chairman, we did meet on September the fifteenth. Present were Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Norton, Commissioner Dale Reeves and myself. We heard an update from Dr. County Smith on the school's reopening plan. And we also heard that a new, uh, director superintendent had been chosen and they were working on the contract. And I'm not sure how that's turned out. Uh, then we had the library board recommendation, which we've already voted on and that was what we have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on agenda tonight is Criminal Justice and Public Safety. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met on September fifteenth with all members present of its Commissioner Goodrow, Leggett, um, Norton, Perkins, Seals and Rice. Uh, we, we reviewed the sheriff's, uh, report. We discussed the, uh, sheriff's, uh, classification policy, which you had just mentioned and has been read into the, uh, minutes. Chief Hartfield, uh, discussed a fire department five year plan. Mayor Taylor presented a contract to work on a, a master plan for the criminal justice complex uh, and had a contract with, uh, A two H Engineering. The committee recommended approval of this contract. And that will be covered in budget, uh, discussion in a few minutes. Uh, also, there was a, a budget amendment for the sheriff's budget, moving some funding around. There was no change to the fund balance and that also will be covered in the Budget Committee in a few moments. That was the extent of our meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on agenda tonight is Budget Committee. Commissioner German?
Yes, Mayor, we met September the fifteenth. Commissioners present were Commissioner Steve Reeves, Rice, Oglesby, Farley, Ray Seals, Dacus and myself. I'm not gonna read the minutes. Everything will be covered by the time we get through this agenda tonight. Six point two employee health insurance, uh, Budget Committee looked at the proposal for health insurance for our, our employees and the Budget Committee liked the way it looked, liked the numbers, but just, uh, felt like we wanted to run it past the employees, get their opinion. So we did not make a recommendation. So I guess I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Yes, uh, we did have employee meetings. On last Thursday, we had a Zoom meeting, uh, last Friday, there was in person meeting. And Monday, we had sort of what I call sort of a cleanup meeting for a couple of folks who weren't able to be at and answer some questions that folks thought of over the weekend. I personally have not heard any, uh, any problems with it. It does save the county funds, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of around hundred fifty to two hundred thousand. It also lowers premiums for individuals and families, which is something we're striving to do. We will have to, uh, leave the count, the state plan for two years, for twenty-four months. Um, but if we, we've got the same, we're using a Blue Cross product and, uh, with a gap insurance, basically a, a base policy one and one that takes care of some deductibles because it's high deductible, Blue Cross policy. But this is similar to what we did a few years back. On the call tonight is Mr. Wes Dozier with Five Points Health Plans and he has worked with us as a broker for the last several years on several things and he's, he's a broker of record. I'm gonna turn it over to him, just to give a very quick overview of this and to answer any questions you may have. We need to be on time with everything. We really need to approve this this month so that next month we can take time and sign everybody up, answer questions, give the state notice to move forward. Uh, Mr. Dozier?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you, Skip. Sorry if my, I'm moving my video around. I'm in the car, was trying to, uh, juggle baseball schedule for the kids and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, yeah, we looked at the, the health insurance. This is something, um, that we did a couple of years ago. Uh, we thought that it would be a good idea every couple of years to look at the, uh, the state plan, uh, alongside looking at private quotes, again, trying to get the best coverage, um, you know, the best cost for the employees. Um, this year, uh, we looked at multiple different, uh, insurance carriers, uh, different plans like, um, you got gap insurance and HRAs and, uh, major medical plans. And where we landed was the, uh, the biggest savings opportunity was with Blue Cross and Blue Shield Plan with a gap insurance. Um, for those of you that have been around several years, um, li- like Mayor Taylor has said, uh, this is something that we did a few years ago. Uh, it's very popular, uh, with the employees. Um, the, uh, deductibles are the same as they are, uh, today, uh, on the current plan. But the out of pocket maximum on, uh, these pri- private plans, uh, is less than half of the current out of pocket maximum. So not only are we saving the county money, uh, but we're making the coverage better, uh, for the employees. Uh, from a, uh, a budget perspective, um, the estimated hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand in savings uh, was actually over your existing plan. Um, the state health plan had a five, roughly a five and a half percent increase. So, uh, the savings over, uh, what the increased amount, uh, would have been, uh, is gonna actually be somewhere in the neighborhood of around, uh, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, over a five year period, um, if you do some averaging of, uh, what it would be to renew with the current plan versus moving to the private, uh, plan with the gap insurance, uh, it's a cumulative savings, uh, if you project it out over the next five years, uh, of, uh, an estimated one point four million dollars. As, uh, Mayor Taylor said, uh, we did several different meetings. Uh, we did, uh, an in person, uh, meeting. I know we had over fifty people, uh, there at the justice complex. Um, we had, uh, quite a few people show up uh, for both of the Zoom meetings. Um, and there were some, there were some really good questions. Um, and I believe that it was favorably received, uh, by the employees themselves. So I'll, um, I'll pause there and ask Mayor Taylor if he has anything, uh, additional to add or, uh, if there's any questions from, um, from the Commissioners.
Commissioners, anybody got any questions? I think the packet of the Commissioner Committee packet had a presentation in it so that you could review it. It showed the premiums and sort of the, the information that I think you needed. Uh, during the presentations, employees got into coverages and things of that nature and those questions are answered there. Um, does anybody have any question? All right, I would need a motion to join this plan and to give notice of the state that we are leaving their plan and to move forward.
Norton, so moved.
Oglesby seconds.
Okay, uh, if you're in favor, please vote yes. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
No.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
No.
Okay, does anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passes sixteen in favor, two against. Commissioner German?
All right, six point three. This is a contract proposal to hire Fleming Architects to address the engineering, surveying, design and construction agreements at the old school board office. Also, there's a proposal to address planning and budgeting for future uses for the old Summerville Elementary Building. Since there is some interest in the old elementary building, uh, it was recommended that we only consider the contract for the school board office. And I actually thought the Budget Committee recommended approval for just the school board office, but according to the minute, to the minutes, we did not. So I'll turn it over again to you, Mayor, for discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, what this is, is, uh, Fleming has worked with the school system when they had the building as well as some other buildings. They have some prior knowledge to it, so I contacted them to help us. It's gonna need some remodeling and it's gonna have some design work. Are there some surveying in the back? We've got to take care of some drainage issues. Uh, I did talk to Mr. Ralser. Mr. Ralser has some changes he would like to make to the contract. The premise is fine, but he has some, there's some language in it. He wants to adjust that, um, that needs to be done before we, uh, we, before we sign it. So if there's a motion to approve this and, uh, that would need to be included in the motion. The cost of the contract is right at fifty thousand dollars, but that would take it all the way through construction. And I fully expect this to be a multi-year, at least two year project, at least two budget cycle project. And, um, if there's any questions, we have to try to answer them.
Mayor, uh, Commissioner Powers here, are you recommending that we go ahead and approve it with, uh, uh, Attorney Ralser's changes to become? Or would it be better to table it until those changes are put forth?
No, sir, I'm recommended go ahead and move forward with it. Let him adjust what he needs to, so we can put something in place. Some of us, to give you an example of what his prob, one of his problems is, is that if there's a disagreement that they would go to Shelby County in their courts, he says emphatically no, that it'll be in a Fayette County court. Uh, and there was some arbitration language in there he would like to remove because he's had some, oh, actually, the county's had some bad experience on that. But as far as the premise of what they want to do, he's okay with that.
Okay, if, if there's no other discussion from the rest of the Commissioners, I move we, uh, go ahead and approve it after Attorney Minor's changes are made.
Thank you.
With this changes.
All right, Dr. Second?
Perkins second.
Mr. Perkins? If you're in favor of this, please vote yes when your name is called. Commissioner.
Mayor, quick, Mayor, quick question. This does not include the Summerville Elementary property.
No, sir, this does not. This is only the old school board property. And I've had a couple of conversations regarding to that and I'm supposed to be getting some information week, ten days and in time enough for our committee meetings next month to bring you up to date on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
No.
Commissioner, let's, Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yeah.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yeah.
Is there anyone who'd like to change their vote? Not seeing any, motion passes sixteen in favor, two against. Okay, Commissioner German?
Six point four, this is a mental health contract. This contract does not require usage, but it sets the fees if the judges decide defendants require evaluation. It was approved by the Health and Welfare Committee and approved by the It was approved by the Health and Welfare Committee and approved by the Budget Committee. So I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Second, Reeves.
Right. Motion's properly sec, most made and seconded. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Commissioner German?
Six point five, Criminal Justice Complex Master Plan. This contract is with A two H Engineering, and on page one twelve, you can see what the charges will be. We will need this surveying and budget estimates to know what is possible to improve our facility in the future and to know what structures could be added for future growth. This was approved by the Development Committee and also the Budget Committee. I make a motion. We approve it.
Second, Commissioner Seals.
All right, motions are made and properly seconded. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Commissioner, uh, German?
Six point six. This budget amendment allows the county clerk to move funds from a reserve account to use for supplies. No change to the fund balance. This was approved by the Budget Committee. I make a motion. We approve it.
Norton, say.
All right, Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Commissioner German?
Six point seven. This budget amendment will reallocate existing funding to the correct line to implement the sheriff's employee policy. No change to the fund balance. This was approved by the Criminal Justice Public Safety Committee and also the Budget Committee. I make a motion. We approve it.
Rice, seconds.
All right, motions are properly made and seconded. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Dale, Dale Reeves? Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Commissioner German?
All right, six point eight. This is a budget amendment pertains to the Capital Projects Fund. This amendment places the insurance proceeds and the additional funds to purchase the new ambulance to replace the ambulance that was totaled in a wreck. This will reduce the Capital Projects Fund by forty-seven thousand, two eighty-two. This was approved by the Health and Welfare Committee and the Budget Committee. I make a motion. We approve it.
Norton, second.
Motion's made and properly seconded. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Commissioner German?
That's all we had, Mayor.
Okay, gentlemen, there is, there's at least, there's, there's a couple of things under new business. One is on your agenda. Chief Hartfield, in his five-year plan, had an operations officer. He asked if he could address you because he's trying to get the person in place. Is Chief Hartfield on?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
All right, if you can quickly summarize what you've got and what you want to do.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm between y'all and the German. Real quickly, I have a budget amendment in front of y'all to put in this position of a deputy chief of operations. This is positioned as a no benefits position. It's not required any benefits. And it would just, as free pages pass this resolution, you'll see the, how it breaks down the examples of the work that he'll be doing, and I request that this budget amendment be passed.
Chief, this is coming from funds that are in your budget and they'll be moved around to put in this position, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and this would be a part-time position?
Well, I have it as a part-time from October tenth through December nineteenth and full-time from that point on through July at this time.
Okay. Mr. Seals?
Yes, Chief. I know you had it part-time from November to December. Would the budget being like this? Let me ask you something. Could you live with it part-time until budget next year or before budget when we make more than thirty hours a week? Could you handle that?
Yes, sir. I would be more appreciative of anything I can get. It's, it's, it's a job that's gonna require many hours, and I'll take what I can get and get him started. I mean, there's, there's more hours in the day even after you get through, but I'll take what I can get.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as I understand what your request is, is a part-time position, thirty hours a week? Is that what we're calling this?
Sir, Mayor.
When we say part-time, we're talking about thirty hours a week?
Absolutely. If, if that's what I, I have to take to get him on board and get him started, I am willing to accept that. Yes, sir. It's the thirty-hour week part-time position with no benefits.
Okay, and briefly describe what he's gonna do, just in, just center.
Yeah, he, he assists in all fire department leadership. He's also assumed operational command when I'm out of town at a, either on vacation or a conference. He, he helps with long-term, short-term planning and the goals. He works directly with the district chiefs to make sure each individual district has what it needs. And the, the man I've chosen is a current district chief now that's been out here for a long time, that works well already with the district chiefs.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think he would be a great asset to the fire department if the commission would agree to these terms. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have a motion out there?
Norton, so move.
You're a second?
Oglesby, seconds.
Okay.
Mayor Taylor, quick question. Commissioner Powers? Are we going based on the original presentation by Chief Hartfield? Or are we going with what was suggested of part-time through to the beginning of next budget year? What is the?
The motion is to go part-time through the rest of the budget year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Comment from Norton, please.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes, under the thirty-hour work rule, if we, if he exceeds that, and this is probably gonna be an HR question, i- is, is there not some standard that says that you have to pay him some kind of benefit after that thirty, if he goes, exceeds thirty hours and he's still on the clock? Does he not at some point became a, become a covered employee?
What you've got to do, if you go over thirty hours, and it's an average thirty hours, if you go over thirty hours, you have to be offered a benefit, the health insurance. And that's the reason we generally try to limit everybody to twenty-eight hours because some, some weeks you'll go over, some weeks under. So that'll be up to Chief to make sure he does not go over thirty, and if there's any question about it, we'll have to cut back his hour some weeks to make sure that average stays at thirty or less. But it's a benefit, not a, not a pay situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, or?
Commissioner Goodrow?
So, uh, this twenty-five thousand, seven twelve through the end of the budget year, is that less than that now?
It will be. Yes, sir. I think the numbers I ran this afternoon were somewhere in the neighborhood of like twenty-two, five for to do thirty hours. So it's gonna be less than the amount that's in the budget, budget amendment that you're looking at.
Okay.
So, and we will not go over that amount of money. And I feel sure that by the end of the year, he's gonna need some money back in someplace here, the equipment or, or, or something. So we may be moving that back someplace else, back in April, May timeframe.
Does this resolution have a, a pay rate in it?
Uh, Chief, I think it's nineteen dollars or so an hour, right at that.
Is that in the resolution?
No, sir. That's just.
So how do we, how do we get that inserted?
One second, please. Hold on. Well, you make a motion that you pay no more than nineteen, was it nineteen nineteen, Chief?
That is correct, Mayor.
Uh, whoever makes, so do I have a motion? I have a motion, Commissioner Norton and second Commissioner Oglesby, if they'd like to include not to pay more than nineteen nineteen an hour.
So move by Norton. So move by Norton.
That's fine.
Okay. So that's, that's caps it for thirty hour week. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Dacus? I lost Commissioner Dacus.
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. I'm slow. I'm still here.
Uh, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not hearing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Um, there was one other thing I emailed out today about nine-one-one bill, and I was talking to the Commissioner Se, uh, Ray Seals about, is a hundred and eight, a hundred and nine thousand dollar bill. Last year, if you remember when nine-one-one was putting software into place, county agreed to buy a segment for the jail. But since it's a late hour, Commissioner Seals, can we wait one more month so that everybody can ask a question?
Uh, yes, sir. That'd be fun.
I appreciate that. The only other thing I've got, and this is just a, a motion real quick. The funding for, to do the survey and the phase one for the animal shelter. I do, I, Charles put together a budget amendment, but it did not go out in time. If I could have just a quick motion to allow me to spend up to five thousand dollars between the two of those to get that moving, I think it's gonna be less than that. Twenty-two hundred is what I was given for the phase one. I can't see the survey being any more than that.
Commissioner Reeves makes that motion, Mayor.
Goodrow, seconds.
Mr. Goodrow, second. Goodrow, thank you. One second, we're looking for another sheet. We've gone through a lot of paper tonight. Thank you, okay. Commissioner Dale Reeves? And Commissioner Goodrow, thank y'all. And, one second. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimmy Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Not seeing any. Motion passes eighteen in favor, none against. Ladies and gentlemen, or is there any other business we need to talk about tonight?
Motion, good, John.
Motion made. Do you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor, please turn off.